Hello Andrew, you there? Hello.
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 Maybe she's just not there or something. But then you can also push that to unmuted too.
Push that is always muted right now?
No, they can hear you.
They can hear me now?
Well maybe.
Yo, he's dropping? Oh like this is real. You talking about that?
Yeah, so you could.
Okay, let's see. Let's do a roll call here in a minute. Oh man, that clock's fast. We got seven minutes. Need to do something. Be back at it before the 7:00 thing. I ain't good at this stuff. Wasn't no computers when I was in high school. Ain't that a shame? Yep. Yep.
I'd like to call this council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me in saying of the pledge of allegiance? Drew, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
The flag of the United States of America.
Stand standing for a moment of prayer or solid meditation. Thank you. Just want to remind everybody to put your phones on vibrate or silent or airplane mode. Uh, okay, could I get a motion for the minutes of approval for June 6th? Let's just do a roll call. Why don't we do that? Why don't we see what's here? Do a roll call. Melody, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mishler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilwoman Hinky. President Dawson.
Present. Now, could I have a motion for minutes for approval for June 16th, 2025 council meeting?
Second.
Motion for Mr. Hinky, second by Mrs. Hines. Melody, would you do a roll call, vote on approval of the minutes?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King. Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye. Uh, could I get a motions to approve the minutes of the June 18th, 2025 tax abatement committee meeting?
Go move.
And a motion by Mrs. Hines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mishler. Melody, would you do a roll call? Vote on that, please.
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye. Presentation and introductions. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, council. I, uh, I rise to, um, introduce, uh, after an exhaustive, uh, process that we took in order to, uh, try to find, uh, new leadership at the learner. And we were, uh, very fortunate to land, uh, two wonderful leaders. This was, uh, an exhaustive search, as I said earlier, and it, um, it actually, um, uh, epitomizes, uh, the role that we know the learner play within our, uh, community, but also it allows us, uh, to be able to, uh, move, uh, towards not just a promoting, uh, and, uh, marketing opportunity to move our, our, uh, financial stability, uh, at the learner to, in a better place, but also create the kind of legacy, uh, that we know, uh, we've invested in all along with the learner. So with that said, uh, I'd like to introduce, uh, Carl Thompson. Would you stand? Uh, Carl will become the new general manager of the, uh, of the learner, and Carl brings a wealth of experience, uh, from, uh, San Diego, California, to, uh, to the, to the great city of Elkhart, Indiana. All right? Okay, and Carl, uh, has, uh, has been in leadership and marketing, uh, for, uh, multiple different, um, organizations, uh, but, uh, Carl is a, um, a professional in relationship to not just concerts, but, uh, performance, performances, whether, uh, they be, uh, Tony Award, uh, performances, as well as, uh, other theater performances. And basically, I'd like for you to have a moment or two to talk to Carl, and he can run through that list where I can butcher it. He can make sure to, uh, to let you know everything that, that, uh, he has done, but for us to be able to, uh, bring Carl, uh, into the learner is just a wonderful opportunity for us. And Bob Garcia, would you stand as well? Bob, uh, is, uh, is also a, a strong professional in the arts, and, uh, Bob comes to us from Orlando, Florida. And, uh, Bob has, uh, managed, uh, uh, organizations and theaters like the Radio City Music Hall in New York, uh, and he has managed multiple theaters, uh, along his twenty-something years, uh, of service. Uh, and with the, with the two of them, they bring about forty years of experience to the learner. And we were pretty excited, uh, that we were able to bring them both in, and Bob will become, uh, the, um, he will lead our efforts and events and, uh, financial, uh, acuity in relationship to the learner. So operationally, uh, he will run that, uh, relationship, uh, and, uh, as well as any additional events outside of the events that we currently give. So, um, uh, we'd like to welcome, uh, Bob from Florida to Elkhart and Carl from San Diego to Elkhart. We would like to welcome them both. Thank you so much for being here.
And so when you have, when you have a moment or two, uh, after the meeting, unless they would like to say something, you're more than welcome to, uh, say something if you'd like. It's up to you. See? I knew with, with, when we got theater folk, they always like to take the mic and one way.
Theater people like to be on stage, so I'll take just a moment to thank you all for this amazing opportunity.
Would you, would you state, would you, would you state your name just for the record?
Yes, yes, my name is Carl Thompson, general manager for the Learner Theater. And again, I'm thrilled for this opportunity. I'm looking forward to this exciting new endeavor. I think I speak for both Bob and myself that we are definitely up for the challenge and willing to give our utmost effort to not only bring awareness to the Learner Theater, but to continue, continue to grow its efforts, not only in the community, but also in the region. So again, thank you so much, and I'm looking forward to spending more time with each of you to get to know about your plans and vision for the future of not only the learner, but the community, and how we can best support your efforts. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Would you like some comments, sir? You must be behind the scenes guy, you're not the stage guy there.
I'm one of those guys that likes to work with numbers and kind of hide behind the curtain, but no, I'm glad to be here.
Just for the record, state your name.
Robert Garcia, like, please call me Bob, though. I don't like to be called Robert. My mom used to yell at me, use those words, Robert Earl. I am so glad to be part of this organization. Um, I, I was excited to come here. Um, I was, I'm, I'm from Florida, but when I went back to Florida, it wasn't what I remember as a child. It was very hot, humid, and just, I, I, I've spent forty years in New York, so I really wanted those seasons, you know, those four seasons, and I miss that. So I'm glad to be part of this organization. I bring a lot of, uh, experience in the financial world, as well as event programming, and I believe in arts for everyone, and that's kind of where my mantra is in my head. So we're going to bring everything and, eh, for everybody, and we're going to try to get people that haven't been to the learner into those seats. And excuse me, I'm just under a little asthma attack here today, but, um, this must be the pollen in the air. But I'm glad to be here, and I'm welcome to meet with all of you, and I've talked to some of you already, and I look forward to meeting you all. Thank you again.
Thank you, guys. Welcome to Elkhart. If either of you are looking for a place to stay, I know a guy. You know, I know a guy.
That pollen is our welcoming gift.
Okay. Thank you. Unfinished business reports of council committees, Mr. Mishler?
Yes, the tax abatement committee met on June 18th to discuss this year's, uh, tax abatements, and, um, I believe we'll have an additional special call coming up to further, uh, delve into those.
Thank you. Orders on second reading. Would you read proposed ordinance 25 dash zero dash O dash 20 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25 dash O dash 20, an ordinance annexing certain real estate commonly known as vacant land situated on Greenleaf Boulevard and vacant land at the east end of Vernon Avenue, and declaring the same to be a part of the city of Elkhart.
Thank you. Could I get a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance on second reading? Motion by Mr. Hinky, second by Mr. Crabtree. Melody, would you do a roll call, vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler. Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye. Pass second reading. Is there any council discussion?
I'd just like to say something.
Mister Holtz.
President Dawson, um, I spoke to somebody who lives on Vernon, and, uh, I drove out, and it's a quiet, welcoming corner of the city, and, uh, just hope that we can preserve that, uh, with the annexation that'll kind of extend where housing will be. Uh, I'm excited for it, and I think it'll be a, a good addition, but if there's anything we can do to preserve that quiet, uh, atmosphere that's there, I think we should make additional efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Holtz. Mr. Hinky.
So this is one of, uh, several that we have before us now. Notice they're all on the northeast, just saying. Um, it's stable, it is what we look for, but we need to broaden that to other parts of the city as well. That can't be the only place. We're running out of land. But I do think, uh, people are, investors are looking for that space. They're looking for that stable margin. Uh, we do have other areas, there have been studies to prove that. I'm welcoming this group, um, but I do think we are running out of land quickly.
Anyone else? Saying none, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? Saying none. Return it back for the council floor. Could I get a motion and a second to adopt this on third and final reading?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hinky, second by Mrs. Hines. Melody, would you do a roll call, vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 25 dash O dash 21 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25 dash O dash 21, an ordinance annexing certain real estate commonly known as Elkhart East Areas C and E, intersection of County Road Six and County Road Seventeen, Elkhart, Indiana, four six five one four, and declaring the same to be a part of the city of Elkhart.
Thank you. Could I get a motion and a second to adopt this on second reading? Motion by Mr. Hinky, second by Mr. Crabtree. Melody, would you do a roll call, vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye. Any council discussion on this proposed ordinance? Saying none, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? Saying none, we'll turn it back to the council floor. Could I get a motion for adoption on third and final? Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mrs. Hines. Melody, would you do a roll call, vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler. Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Unfinished businesses and res, unfinished ordinances and resolutions referred to committee, uh... This will remain a proposed order, proposed resolution 25 dash R dash fifteen. This resolution will remain in committee. Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash sixteen, this resolution will remain in committee. Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash seventeen, this ordinance will remain in committee. Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash eighteen, this ordinance will remain in committee. Proposed ordinance 25 dash R dash nineteen will remain in committee. Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash twenty will remain in committee. Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash twenty-one will remain in committee. Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash twenty-two will remain in committee. Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash twenty-three will remain in committee. Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash twenty-four will remain in committee. Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash twenty-five will remain in committee. Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash twenty-six will remain in committee. Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash twenty-seven will remain in committee. Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash twenty-eight will remain in committee. Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash twenty-nine will remain in committee. Tabled ordinances and resolutions, we have...
Thirty.
Missed thirty.
Here's one more.
Uh, could I, would you read proposed resolution 25 dash R?
Stand committee.
That's thirty, will remain in committee. Thank you. Okay, tabled orders and resolutions. That's thirty. Will remain in committee. Thank you. Okay, tabled ordinances and resolutions. There are no tabled ordinance resolutions. New businesses, ordinance on first reading. Would you read Proposed Ordinance 25-0-23 by title, please?
Proposed Ordinance 25-0-23, an ordinance appropriating $50,000 from the Lerner Theater for the Lerner Theater 100-year anniversary celebration activities.
Twenty-two.
All right. This is the typo I got. It's twenty-two. Twenty-five-oh-22. I have twenty-three on my sheet. Okay. All right. If there are no objections, we'll send this on to second reading. Okay. So, I need to hear. Resolutions. Proposed resolution 25-R-33. Please read that by title, please.
Proposed resolution 25-R-33, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, approving the application for community development block grant funds and recommending submission of the application by the mayor for approval.
Can I get a motion and a second to adopt this resolution?
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Mishler. Council discussion. Mr. Huber?
Good evening, council. Mike Huber, Development Services Director, City of Elkhart. This is the start of our next round of five-year consolidated planning processes. Actually, the start, this is the completion of the process. As you know, HUD requires us every five years to go through the process of creating a five-year consolidated plan. Then we update with annual action plans in between. Since the last five-year consolidated plan, the community has collaborated on a number of significant planning initiatives, including the, the city's economic diversification plan, the downtown master plan, and the Benham Neighborhood Plan. As you know, we've worked diligently as a city to align a lot of these plans with programs like the ASPIRE program and investments we're making around a lot of, a lot of areas of the city. But these plans have identified those outcomes related to really increasing private investment and growing both housing and business opportunities within the target neighborhoods. The plans provide strategies that act as a blueprint and highlight opportunities for combining public investments to attract and leverage private and philanthropic investments to achieve these outcomes. This is the philosophy we've put in and guided this new consolidated plan, to bring the city's annual CDBG grant funding into alignment with the other private and with the other public resources in order to leverage those outcomes. At this time, I'm going to introduce Mary Casca, and she's going to give a quick presentation outlining the key tenets of this year's five-year plan.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Mary Casca, Assistant Director of Community Development for the City of Elkhart. And Mike, I think, gave you a really good overview of why we're here today. This is another five-year plan, which will run from 2025 through 2029, and the series of documents that you have copies of really form the application that will be sent to HUD after, if you approve the resolution. So, there are a number of documents that are before you to review and approve. So, as Mike said, we've worked to align all the other planning things that have happened in the last years since almost 2021, the We Thrive Elkhart 2040 Plan, the Complete Neighborhood Vision Report from 2022, the Downtown Elkhart Report, or the Downtown Master Plan from 2023, and then finally, the Benham Neighborhood Plan from 2024. So, we wanted to align our CDBG resources with those plans to target and leverage the resources that we do have. So, we have learned that our allocation for program year starting 2025, which technically started July 1, is about $712,246. We also get a little bit of program income, which equals our total amount of funds for this coming year to about $736,000. So, through this planning process, which started actually in late last year, actually, with citizen participation. And there's a number of citizen participation activities that HUD requires that we carry out. So, that's in the Citizen Participation Plan that you have a copy of, that citizen participation plan require, asked for input from citizens about what they wanted to see in their neighborhoods. There were public meetings, public hearings, surveying. We received 250 or so survey responses from people in the community about what they, what they wanted to see in their neighborhoods. The second is the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Plan, or the NRSA. We've, we've moved that, that NRSA boundaries a little bit, but the key thing about the NRSA is that it allows us to focus and target our resources in the NRSA area, and it also gives us some flexibility in the rules that we have to follow with HUD and how those funds are spent. So, we have a little bit more flexibility, and really, in how we target area meeting income figures. Eighty percent is the figure we target, but in the NRSA, as long as 51% of the beneficiaries are at least 80%, we can exceed that AMI in the NRSA. So, targeting and flexibility is kind of the key of the NRSA. The, the five-year consolidated plan and action plan, that's really the large document that studies, it's a comprehensive study of housing, economic, and community development needs in the Elkhart neighborhood, including strategies and activities as to how we're going to approach those needs. So, the, the five-year plan will guide us over the next five years, and our focus of those strategies is housing, people, and neighborhood improvement needs. So, we start with housing, people, and neighborhood improvement. The last document is the Annual Action Plan for 2025, which will really just focus on the, this coming year that already started on July 1. The consolidated plan really covers about seven goals, and the number one goal is housing supply and increasing the supply of quality and affordable housing, both rental and owner occupied. Housing quality, improving the quality of our existing housing stock, which would be addressed by rehabbing existing housing. Increasing median household income, which is to improve the lives of residents through wealth building. That could be through supporting job training. Reducing environmental hazards. In this area, this is where we're focusing on our lead program that we're rolling out right now to address the impact of lead poisoning of children living in Elkhart housing. Reducing insecurities homelessness. That is our fifth goal. Improving neighborhood conditions, which allow us to be able to impact infrastructure in the neighborhood. And then finally, reducing insecurities of special needs population, for example, individuals who have HIV or AIDS. So, there are a number of activities that have been outlined that'll be part of the five-year consolidated plan, and you have that in the presentation that I've left with you, and Mike has up on the screen, where we are focusing on a number of goals and the type of need that those goals are addressing, and some of the outcome indicators that we're looking to achieve. And these outcomes will be tracked every year over the next five years. At the end of the year, we produce a, a report called the CAPR, which will then bring back to you to indicate, you know, how, where are we with achieving these goals? So, you can see, for example, the goal of housing supply and some of the numerical goals that we've established as far as acquiring lots to build new housing, helping people get into position of low and moderate income individuals in home ownership, developing new affordable rental units. Housing quality would speak to owner occupied and rental renovation, which we're considering doing. Median income housing, or I'm sorry, median household income, which speaks to job training and creating living wage jobs, which could be an activity we would do through some economic development activities, which we've included in the budget for this coming year, as far as being able to assist with new business development. Reducing environmental hazards, which speaks to lead-safe housing. Neighborhood conditions, eliminating blighted structures, improving some of our neighborhood parks or community centers. And the last page of the goals would address neighborhood conditions such as lighting, sidewalks, that sort of thing. Improving the appearance of commercial buildings, reducing insecurities as far as homeless prevention, and lastly, reducing insecurities of special needs population. And some of these goals, we actually work to achieve by partnering with other not-for-profit community organizations who are eligible to receive these funds, who work more hands-on with certain populations of people. So, at the very end of the, the document is the, well, that's kind of a, a summary of everything that we've just talked about as far as the Annual Action Plan, aligning the strategic plan and goals and outcomes to our programming. The, the CON Plan will serve as our application for HUD in the next five years. So, every, once this consolidated plan is approved by HUD, every year, we submit an annual action plan for approval. So, we, we have a five-year approval through this consolidated plan. So, as I said, the amount of funding that we have available this year is $736,246. The last page is our recommended projects and the recommended funding. Twenty percent of these funds currently are used to support our administration and planning of the program, which is basically staff and administrative expenses, and that's a figure we can't exceed under the rules, the HUD rules. The next list of, of subrecipients who would help us to achieve some of the benefits of addressing needs of the population is that next list of recipients that are not-for-profit organizations here in Elkhart. As we go down that list, then we get to housing development and assistance. This is where our owner occupied rehab program would come in, being able to acquire properties and that sort of thing. Neighborhood improvement, funding for that, emergency rental assistance, and this is to assist people who have been homeless, but who are able to possibly get into rental, but lack the, the security deposit to be able to secure the, the unit. And lastly, funding for economic development programs. So, that concludes my overview of our consolidated plan.
Thank you. Questions? Mr.?
Please. So, thank you for that good presentation, and we'll probably have a conversation down the road about this, but are you working with our housing partners, La Casa and Habitat at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. In fact, within the housing allocation, they've actually requested funds for down payment assistance. And so, that kind of fits into the goal of helping people become homeowners.
And, and the other follow-up to that is just that in, in the fourth district, there's a lot of spots for housing starts, and I'd like to see how we can focus some of the money, but some of this effort on getting some new starts going. I know there's some really prime spots that could use a cute little house. Yeah, thank you.
Sorry.
For the citizen participation, how, is it, is it, how is the participation? So, we hold, we hold public meetings that were advertised through various methods, legal notices on the city website. We held them at the Tulsa Center, and I think, Councilman Fish, I think you attended one. Yeah, we, to be honest with you, we started this in the winter, and we had kind of a, a small turnout. We, because of that, we had additional, an additional meeting in April to try to capture more. But the other thing is, we feel that with all the planning that's happened in the last, since 2021 here, that there might be some planning fatigue among people. So, that may have been another reason for the low turnout. However, I think we had a pretty good turnout on the surveying, the surveys that were distributed and returned. So, we did, I think we did get a decent response to the surveys. But we've had a lot of planning activities going on. In all of those plans, this plan was written with awareness of what was contained in those other plans. Yeah.
Yes.
It was interesting to see the Boys and Girls Club, 15,000. Just curious.
After-school care?
Kids' care.
Yes, kids' care.
So...
I guess. It's like a scholarship for the after-school program for kid, for children?
Tonda, as a parent, has three kids, and I'm looking for scholarship money that I would be able to, through the Boys and Girls Club, kids' care.
Yes.
Because I know kids' care is affiliate of the Boys and Girls Club.
Yes.
Would be able to apply, and that's where the funding would be coming from?
As long, as long as you met the, the family, met the area median income. So, they, they have to then keep records of the income eligibility of the family, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Brent, did you have anything?
No, I'm good.
All right. Mr. Hinky?
I don't know. I'm confused, Brent. The light bulb's on up there, and it looks like you have a bright idea, but... Okay.
It is a bright idea.
I, I, I hope there's more detail to this plan. And what I would ask is, in the last plan, what would you say are the measurable successes of the $716,000 per year spent? What would you say?
I think our probably, our biggest success has been our owner occupied rehab program. We've helped a lot of folks address, you know, safety issues in their homes who are income qualified.
Okay. Now, to follow up with that, as, as a taxpayer like everybody is, if we've improved that home, did the home go up in assessed valuation, and did we see the tax assessment come back to prove that point?
You know, it's, it's relatively smaller amounts of funds. I would say the average is maybe 20,000, which, well, we see a lot of need for roofs and furnaces, and I don't think that those two things would have an impact on the assessment.
So, essentially, and that's what I'm trying to drive to, we're in a robust economy. We have been for some time now, but the growth of the CDBG area seems to be growing, and I'm wondering why that is. Why the sprawl of the CDBG zones? What would you say that? Because it went north, and it went into some areas we had not been before.
It moved south into the west a little bit. Yeah. Yeah, actually, there's quite a, a need as the, I think one of the stats in the plan said that on the rental side, the rate of rental cost has gone up 24%, and there's a huge deficit of affordable housing, which is, or particularly people who are earning 30% or less. There's a, there's a need of like 1,500 more homes or housing units. So, rates have gone up. There's a, there's an unmet, unmet demand, and as the plan speaks to, you know, our economy being tied to the RV industry is somewhat... And as the plan speaks to, you know, our economy being tied to the RV industry is somewhat volatile. So in good times, it's very good, and then we plummet. And so there's a lot of instability in our particular industry that I think affects people's ability to.
But the last plummet was more than five years ago in, in the real terms. So I'm wondering, in the best economy we've had in many years, why do our numbers keep going up? Our homelessness is going up, the cost of living is going up locally, illnesses and violent crimes. So I'm looking at all these things, and it does appear as though left hand and right hand aren't necessarily communicating. As I go through the program, and I wish we would have had it before tonight, but I do notice that areas that I'm aware of, improve quality of existing housing stock, and I think we've been saying that for some time, but above that, it says increase the supply of quality, affordable housing. And those two are a little bit conflicting terms, because we keep adding on more cost of quality, and then try to make it affordable, means that they would have to be subsidized in some way. Homelessness, we're actually drawing more homeless. Our population is much larger than we've ever had in our history. And to give, to end homelessness, it's kind of like telling people that we're going to give them money to get this rental, and then we'll talk to them about managing their money. And maybe we should have had, talked about managing their money earlier. Improve overall quality of neighborhoods. And I've been talking with code enforcement, and I got to tell you, I hit the same addresses for the last several years, nothing, nothing, nothing. So it creates that big soar in that neighborhood that if we don't address, all of this really doesn't bring a standard up for that area. And then I would also talk about, I know it's customary to give money to Transportation Council on Aging. And I got to tell you, those rules changed last July. So they become a profit center starting last July. So every building they go to, unlike before, they were billing Medicaid and Medicare, Medicare to the buildings themselves. Now, all nursing homes have to pay Council on Aging direct for negotiated rate of pay, and it is profitable. So why, why would we still give them $20,000?
Well, are you talking about people in nursing homes who use the transportation services?
Any Medicaid recipient now gets paid, and they pay Council on Aging. So Council on Aging is now a profit center.
Yeah, they, they actually have multiple sources of revenue. I don't have an answer for your specific question, but they do have multiple sources of revenue.
Thank you. Mr. Michler.
Thank you. Just a couple quick questions. For the surveys given, were those all in person, or were they online as well?
Online.
Okay. And how were we ascertaining that those residents actually lived within city limits? Did they have to input their address or a zip code?
Yes.
Okay.
And we actually asked some other partners to help us distribute, distribute those surveys.
Okay, thank you. And I see you're giving to Maple City Health again. I know that we discussed that last year. Have, do we have any numbers back on the amount of Elkhart residents? Was it being utilized?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
They, they're required to file reports every time they do a draw of the funds. And then all that gets inputted into the HUD system.
Okay.
And that's actually how we compile the comprehensive report at the end of the year, which will be coming out in about September. We'll be able to report to you on program year 24.
Thank you.
And those numbers will be in, in there.
Excellent. And on page 44, it states that short-term emergency rental assistance is desperately needed. I know our partners at Oslo Township and Concord Township can provide rental assistance. Is their involvement part of this program at all, discussions with them, referrals, or anything like that?
No.
That might be something to consider. Same thing for real services on our friends on the nonprofit side. I know this identified, I think it was 157 homeless that I believe I saw the number in here.
Right.
How was that number found? Because I know in the past, we've had difficulty counting them due to the transitory nature of their situation.
There's a system they use through the coalition, the homeless group, the coalition of regional people. They do count at a point in time and, and report that back into the, into the database.
Okay. And I will note of that, I believe 25 had mental illness. And I know our council in the past had worked with both Bristol, Goshen, and Elkhart County to support the Mental Health Urgent Care Center in Goshen. So, you know, I'm happy to see that we do have some support going to address that concern. Lastly, you know, in the past, we've kind of, and even this year, we're continuing to kind of sprinkle the funds around. Some organization gets this, another organization gets that. And they're all deserving, important organizations. However, I know many communities of our size, smaller or larger, spend one year directly tackling home repair rehab, and another year specifically putting it towards, you know, economic concerns. That way, they get a little more bang for their buck. You know, I hope in the future, we can maybe potentially consider that as a alternative or to give it a shot perhaps.
Yeah, so in about January or so of the year, we actually start our process for the next annual plan, which will start July 1 of '26. So now would be the time to have discussions about, about thinking about that next annual action plan that would kick in in July of next year, you know, as we think about. That would be under our public service category, where we have a cap on that as to how many dollars we can allocate to sub recipients. So that's about 106,000 of our amount of funds right now that would be available.
You know, there's a lot of good stuff in this, and I encourage everyone here or at home to get a chance to take a look at it. It really digs into the numbers about our housing situation, homeless, how we're partnering with various nonprofits in our community. It's really a well-put-together document, and I thank you for your hard work getting this together.
Thank you.
Mr. Hinky.
Thank you, Mayor. In regards to the housing development and assistance, how much is normally, I spoke to a recipient today, and she had a garage and a couple of bathroom repairs, and some other stuff that she needed done. But how, as far as the timing of the application, and what is the normal amount that is allocated?
So it's kind of an open application. There's not a set date. So people apply, and they get on a list. And I believe that there was a resolution adopted that does allow us to go up to $50,000. But that, you know, we have a limited amount of money, so 50,000 wouldn't spread around too far. So we tell, we try to encourage people that this isn't a home makeover. You know, this is to address safety issues, health issues. When it comes to garages, we actually are restricted from doing a garage that's not attached to the house. So we can't do that. So like I said, we do a lot of roofs, furnaces, hot water tanks. So we could be looking at 15, 25, 30,000 a house. So we kind of take them in groups of five, go through all the vetting, and we, we have income verification requirements. And then we, we do inspections to determine what, what the needs are, get, get quotes from several contractors, and then come to some agreement with the homeowner as to what, what, what we could do. Yeah.
I want to thank you, because one of my constituents, well, my neighbor, and when I was getting the application in, he finally did at the end of the year last year. And the block grant started working on his house even during the wintertime, and I was excited. And I didn't even think it was going to work that, you know, you guys were going to, you know, do that much during the wintertime in that fashion. So thank you for that. And a couple of other of my neighbors have participated, and thank you.
Oh, thank you.
For, you know, putting this through and, and.
Well, in our department, that's really comes under Trina Harris, who handles all that from soup to nuts. She covers the entire process.
Does an awesome job.
Yeah.
Yep, and she follows back well, and I will be in for more application and more flyers. So thank you.
We have a list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to commend you also for what you do with three-quarters of a million dollars is not a whole lot. And the way you collaborate with other agencies to make those dollars go further to improve the lives of a lot of people. A lot of it, I know, is not aesthetic, you know? I know things have happened that have actually improved the quality of life for people with roofs, heaters, and those type of things. So I want to applaud you for that.
And I think with where we're at now, with some of the planning work that has been done, and wanting to, you know, leverage the funds more, because as you said, we do have a limited amount of funds. So we need to find ways to leverage it to have a bigger impact.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I want to open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this resolution? Thank you. Anyone in the public sitting down, turning back to council, further council discussion. Mr. Hinky.
So, you know, I, I won't support it, but I'll tell you, we keep talking about three-quarter million dollars. Well, this is now the 30th year, right? That's 21 million plus dollars over those years. And my point to it is, I bet you, we can't point to anything and said, we've, we did that, we improved that.
I disagree. We provided a road for, on Stiver, which opened up eight lots for affordable housing for eight families.
Who built the property?
That was Habitat.
So Habitat, and so the land came from, but we need measurables. So what I'm asking of you, which I have asked in prior years, is to obligate recipients to give us measurable outcomes. Because we can talk about affordable housing, but this is all still tax money, right? Our community, everybody else's community, it's still, it's still based on tax dollars. So I would really like to see where we said we impacted number of homelessness. I would rather not just give money away, rental assistance, but rather give them classes on how to manage money differently, probably is a better outcome long-term. A one-time gift is just that. My hand will be out for that next one-time gift, you know that. I don't think we impact as much as we should, and maybe having third-party people who provide so many hours of financial counseling in order to gain access to these dollars would be a good move. I could support that.
Yes.
Because I think that has a long-term effect in, in paying back that person.
Yes.
And then paying back to our obligation to taxpayers.
Yes.
Because the more we spend, the more people hit that margin of not being able to afford where they live.
Yes.
And so I'm very cautious about, you know, the yin and yang, the push, the tug, because we're spending future dollars, and we're talking about affordable housing. And it's kind of a tough spot. So I think Lifeline is, is one of those, a number of kids, but it shouldn't just be babysitting. It's got to be something more than that, because that's not fair to everyone who's not participating.
Boys and Girls Club.
Sorry?
Boys and Girls.
Boys and, yeah, what did I say?
Lifeline.
Boys and Girls Club. I think there are some worthy people out there, but I can tell you, for example, again, with that transportation, a year ago, they went profitable. And I helped other transportation services start up because that law changed in the state of Indiana, July a year ago. Well, actually, a year ago.
Yeah, so the list that you saw of allocations is, is a recommendation that has not been approved. So, so there's still opportunity to.
And I would suggest too, that when these public hearings happen, we all are notified. We all are notified about those public hearings. So to come here tonight.
I think we're not the only ones that get the money.
I'm talking, I'm talking, Davey, I'll let you talk. Can I talk? Thank you. When those happen, when those happen, we should attend those and not wait till the night of the meeting to say what should or shouldn't happen. We had three or four of them. I got all the notices, you know, so, so I know they were happening. So that's, that's, and it's open to the public, we are the public, so we should be attending those to put our input in. Mr. Michler.
Thank you. One thing I will note about the Council on Aging Transportation is that is generally what's called an NEMT, not Emergency Medical Transport, which is paid for through Medicaid. Recently, they passed a reconciliation bill that made those, I think it's 115 waivers they're called, optional instead of mandatory. That was part of the reconciliation bill. So I know many states like Indiana may not fund that anymore, so there, it might not be as, as cut and dry as it was last year. And so there may be a, a need for the city's role in that transportation role. So just something to consider.
Thank you. Mel, would you do a roll call vote of this resolution, please?
Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilman Michler?
Aye.
Councilman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilman Hinky?
No.
President Dawson?
Aye.
Passes each term.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of order.
Hang on.
Yes.
Brent's not on camera anymore.
Uh, Councilman Curry, can you turn your camera on for us real quick and restate your vote?
Just did. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, good gosh, turn your camera off.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proposed Resolution 24 dash R, 25 dash R dash 34.
Proposed Resolution 25 dash R dash 34, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, approving the inter-local transfer and funding agreement between Elkhart County and the city of Elkhart regarding the Elkhart Courthouse property.
I get a motion, a second to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Ms. Hines. Thank you. Mr. Huber.
Good evening, council. Just wanted to give a little bit of history on how we got here with this resolution this evening. The county commissioners, through the county attorney, initiated contact with the city's legal department in late 2024 regarding disposition of the county courthouse property. The county was starting the process of planning their exit from the property, which was driven by their determination that the existing structure was, is basically effectively at the end of its useful life. And they were making the decision, have made the decision, and completed nearly the construction of the new facility in Goshen. Their planning approach identified an RFP process that they would go through to dispose of the property in 2025, which would need to begin in spring or summer, with an understanding that a full redevelopment of the property would benefit both the city and the county. They initiated the contact and offered to transfer the property to the city in lieu of going through their own RFP process. As we received the offer, we gave it some, some consideration. The city performed at length some due diligence to confirm the original condition findings that were prepared and conducted by the county, and to start to determine some, and estimate some of the costs that might be associated with demolishing the facility, in addition to doing our standard title research and, and environmental, Phase 1 environmental reviews of the property. And then at the conclusion of our due diligence, we asked the county to share in the demolition costs associated with, with the building that they determined to be at its use, at the end of its useful life. They agreed that in, in addition to the transfer, they would fund a million dollars towards demolition, as outlined in the agreement that you have in front of you. So that's kind of how we got to the space we are tonight, and happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, thank you, Mike. So they're giving 1 million. Do we have an estimate for the total cost of demolition?
I think we are, our estimate is between 2.5 and 2.7 million dollars for the demolition.
Why?
Now, we don't have a bid, but.
And that is the entire site, the old high school?
It would be the entire block, return it to make it a basically a, a greenfield development site for redevelopment.
Okay. Was there any discussion or thought into rehabbing either the courthouse or the old high school, or any?
We, we went by the information we were given by the county, that they determined the building doesn't have useful life left, and that would need to be demolished. So that's, that's the approach we agreed with from them, from their recommendation, and move forward with.
Okay, thank you. And do we have a future plan for the site?
So we will, we will be initiating a process that will be both market-driven and include an urban design component in order to create a highest and best use, or a series of highest and best use scenarios for that block, which we would then use to craft an RFP to go out to a developer or a series of developers to build what the market and our, our current, the urban design approach is to match the intent of the walkability and livability goals associated in the downtown master plan. So we want to have kind of a little bit more control, rather than just letting it out for anybody to come and do whatever they want, to kind of drive what we want to see happen there in the future.
Thank you. And this would be a redevelopment project?
Correct.
Okay. I know they have a lot of projects going on. Is there, do they have the capacity for, for this as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Holtz?
I was basically going to ask the same question, but just in a different way.
I was basically going to ask the same question, but just in a different way. This is part of the downtown TIF as far as geographically, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Hinky. David, is your mic on?
Shared cost, I would have thought that they have a greater risk and obligation than the city, but we're, we're going to get a million dollars and the real cost is 2.5 to 3 million, you said?
2.5 to 2.7. That's initial costs, correct.
But we're not sure.
We're correct.
Because what we do know is, you know, a lot of mold and some asbestos. And so I'm really wondering why, again, we would take over an obsolete, dilapidated property and take the full risk. The county is wise in this part because they have a fixed cost they can get it over with, but the city is on the lurch, in my opinion, with all that we don't know. That's a huge cost.
So the other part that we don't know, David, is this was an offer that was made in lieu of an RFP process. The county had indicated that through their RFP process, they might just put it up for sale and anybody could just come and buy it and not tear it down and continue to run it and not invest in it. We would, the unknown of something like that happening and continuing to mitigate the momentum that we have in trying to take control of the property and create the new investment that we can drive from that as opposed to losing five to 10 to 15 to 20 to 30 years of somebody else not investing in it and making that have a negative impact on what we're trying to do in downtown. That's the risk that I felt was greater than a little bit larger share of demolition costs and having control over the future of the property.
David, I kind of, I agree with you. I agree with, I agree with what you're saying, but having set in on those negotiations, if you want to call them that, I think this is probably the best that we were going to get. And I mean, and I concur. I went in there thinking, okay, you know, you're going to give us the building, going to give us this tear down? No. You know, and we, and I stress the fact that we are county residents. I pay a city tax and a county tax and that we should be able, you should be able to give us this building, tear it down and give it to us, you know. I concur. But that was not the vibe we're getting. It wasn't even close to that. So the administration did their due diligence, I believe, in getting to this point. So while I concur with you, I didn't, I didn't see any other option.
It just would seem that we would, one, we've got to get to a fixed cost. How much is this going to take? Because this may be even a worse deal than I'm considering.
We have a very educated cost, but we don't know until an actual goes out for bid and a bidder comes in with a contract that says it's not.
But we're willing to have a resolution to do this. So what I'm asking is, do we have anybody that would be interested in this size property at free of charge, don't really care, depending on what they build there, comparison to if they sell it to somebody for whatever it is, the building does have a certain value. And whoever buys it is going to have to pay that tax on whatever that stated value is. So I'm just wondering, because we have another Chase building right down the road that we purchased at a huge amount of money, and here the city is the largest investor in itself. That's, that's my concern. We have land available. We have other properties available.
Again, we're doing the market-driven data research to figure out specifically what this block could and should most highest and best use include, but we know we do have developer interest in the site. Absolutely.
You have a developer interest?
We have had multiple developers contact us about potential to develop this site.
And you feel good about?
Absolutely.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. At this time, I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this resolution? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council. Melody, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilman Michler?
Aye.
Councilman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilman Hinky?
No.
President Dawson?
Aye.
Thank you. There are no vacation hearings, new business. I would like to commend the entire police, fire department, street department, building and grounds, communications, everybody on the Fourth of July event this weekend, as well as the Jazz Fest, living downtown on Main Street. When these events happen on Friday, Saturday, some Sunday mornings, and you wake up Monday morning and it literally looks like nobody was ever downtown. So I know during the Fourth, I saw the chief walking around. I saw assistant fire chief out there. So it was all hands on deck for this event. And the city did it, the entire city, all the departments did an outstanding job. So I want to commend them for that. Mr. Michler.
Yes, just real quick. There was a traffic accident in front of my house yesterday and I ran out there to assist along with several other neighbors. And I just want to commend the rapid response of both the Elkhart Fire Department and the Elkhart Police Department who were there to assist, and they did a tremendous job. There was also a county sheriff out there and I want to thank them for their support as well. So they did a great job and it was great to see the life-saving skills firsthand. So thank you.
Ms. King?
I'd like to first thank the National African American Association for coming to Elkhart doing Jazz Fest. I think it was...
National American Association of RVs.
RVs.
Yes.
And they came from about 28 different states and they enjoyed Elkhart. Then I want to thank Thor for sponsoring the group for lunch at Tolson. Thank you. And Dr. Brianna Allen for the Tolson, being a host for the location for lunch for Thursday and Saturday. Who else? It was Brand Design RV for providing the transportation for the RVers to infro the manufacturing plant. Who else? Alliance RV for the last tour. And they were so impressed with Elkhart. Thank you. Mayor and the piano, Levon Johnson, Ryan Brady of Alliance. Mayor? Joshua Short for being the moderator. He did an excellent job. Also John Huntsberger and the staff of, who is it? No. The staff of Tolson, the students, the cater of Tolson. And it was a wonderful event and thank you all. Brent for attending the luncheon on Thursday and Friday. Tonda for attending also on Thursday and Friday. They were greatly impressed with Elkhart and the presentation that Dr. Brianna Allen showed on Park Point with the Southside, Central. And they're looking forward to coming back and bringing more people. So thank you all that showed them hospitality. And at the Jazz Fest, you may not have known that they were in attendance at quite a bit throughout the Jazz Fest. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Hinky?
The Medicare law, I'm just asking you to relook at that. I'm in that business. We write checks to transportation companies every month now, where before they were obligated to bill out of Medicaid at Medicaid rate directly to Medicaid.
Councilman Hinky, if you're discussing a previous resolution, we can discuss that following council. However, this is for new business, not discussion of a previously passed resolution.
But you can answer me publicly and I couldn't get you back online.
All right. All right. Is there anyone else? We're not going to do this tonight.
So North Point RV Park, we've had complaints about that being a year-round living quarters. And there were two complaints called in to me. I question our minutes. If you would look at our minutes, we're not writing verbatim or filling in for the public that speaks to us.
David, we're not, we're not going to, this is a new method of reporting that the state allows us to do. We don't have to do them verbatim anymore.
I'm just asking.
We haven't done them verbatim in two years, I think, two or three years. Yes.
103 Garfield, the cars in the lot. So I've called that in on 311 for now three years. And I'm told it's an untouchable property and I'd like to know why that is. And then golf carts on city streets. I'm not sure of the current law, but I think I need updating on that law because we are seeing more of that. And then who do I talk to if Jamie RC is not here? I would like that.
I would suggest you talk to the mayor.
And then Chief Melanes, thank you for the updates. That's greatly appreciated.
Mr. Holtz?
I just wanted to thank the mayor and chief of staff, Irwin, for letting me come in for a financial discussion today, you know, with Senate Bill 1 passing and, you know, our new reality. I've got all kinds of thoughts kicking around in my head and I couldn't wait for a scheduled update. So I asked if we could have a meeting and I really appreciate the hour and a half that they gave to me and that they're on top of things and the fiscal health of the city is secure.
Rick Curry, do you have anything on the new business?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right. Neighborhood associations, you got anything?
Board of Works, mayor.
Mayor, you got something? I started with him. You got something?
Yeah, real quickly. And I think a portion of you talked about it already, but I want to make sure I reemphasize the fact that we have gone from Rhapsody to Juneteenth and to, oh, no, to Jazz Fest and then on, on through Fourth of July. And, and these are all, these have all been well-attended events and quite frankly, very highly managed by our departments. And I'd like to send a special thanks to all the departments as Council, Council President Dawson did, but the Fourth of July celebration is one of the largest events that we hold downtown. And I, I don't, I think it goes kind of underneath the umbrella of the Jazz Fest. But for one day, there, there isn't any other event that is densely populated as the Fourth of July, which is the event that the Parks Department puts on. And the Parks Department staff, led by Jamison Charneke and Liz Statenour and all of the others that actually worked so diligently in bringing the music and then securing the fireworks, which was actually donated by Innova Welsh Packaging, I believe. Was there another donor as well? Jamison, I think your own line relative to the fireworks, but it was amazing. And it was well-done and everyone seemed to have a wonderful time. And so for those of you who came down, thank you. But it is not easy at all getting traffic in and out. The concerns for after the fireworks are always, one in which we want to usher the folk who came down out safely. And the police department and the fire department worked diligently to ensure that folk were getting out in a reasonable amount of time. But for us to have an estimated somewhere around 10, 11,000 people in the spaces in and around downtown, it's wonderful to see, but it also is great to know that there weren't any injuries that I know of. And we're going to kind of keep it as that up until now. And so thank you for all of those who participated. And we've, and as you can see, it's been a pretty large trail of large events that we've had up until now, headed towards the race, which will come up the end of, end of July, early August, and also multiple events that are now scheduled for the Central Green going into August will be well-attended as well. So that's just a thank you to all of those who have been a part of that. And let's continue to put Elkhart into that space where we not just do these events, but we do them well and we do them for our residents and we serve them in a manner that I believe is unprecedented.
And we do them very safely too, mayor, I want to add. We do them very safely. I mean, Chris, Chief Summers, if I can just have a way that I can get in my garage, you know, do the fireworks, I'll be happy. All right. Neighborhood associations. I know you had, you didn't have your meeting yesterday, did you, Brent?
Right. The Pimaran Neighborhood Association. We postponed our meeting for various reasons, but we have talked, some of us together, about the things we need to get done here in short order. We need to plan our annual picnic and also we need to plan our neighborhood cleanup that has been of great success in the past few years. So we'll be working on those two items soon.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Anyone else? Seeing none. Privilege of the floors. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything that was not on our agenda tonight? So please step forward, give your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, President-elect.
Harvis, members of the council. My name is Ralph Spellbrink. Today is July 7. Therefore, it seems timely to me to change the public comment time to about seven minutes. The Elkhart truth doesn't provide a forum that it did, now it doesn't provide a forum for community discussion like it did 10 years ago or 20 years ago. So I think that there needs to be more time for somebody that wants to come in. And I am aware that the city limits now include residents and Jefferson Township and Boggo Township. Have another statement to read. Dumbass, you're not allowed to...
Mr. Spellbrink, Mr. Spellbrink. We don't do that.
Huh?
We don't do that.
Okay.
You can read it without that. We don't do that. Thank you.
You're not allowed to defend or represent yourself and present evidence of misconduct, mistakes, or neglect by city employees. City employees do not make mistakes. City Court Judge Grodnick essentially said that to property owner Ralph Spellbrink when he appeared in court for an alleged cosmetic code violation. Therefore, code enforcement unit should prepare a report of activities prior to July 1 by July 28 this year for council members to review. County does not have a code enforcement unit. Today is July 7, 2025. I think Michelle Walker would make a good comparable city to see what their activities are. Also think that Councilman Curry and Councilman Hinky would be good people to evaluate what code enforcement is doing.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Scheduling of committee meeting, we have...
I believe it's on the ninth. I believe we have a special call for, to discuss our tax abatements, the ninth.
Yes.
At 6:00 PM.
Yes.
All are welcome.
Thank you. Acceptance of communications.
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Fish. Would you do a roll call, Melody, on accepting communications?
Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilman Michler?
Aye.
Councilman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilman Hinky?
Aye.
President Dawson?
Aye. Got to get a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mrs. Hines. Would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilman Michler?
Aye.
Councilman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilman Hinky? President Dawson?